Yeah. Okay. Definitely feedback back.
Here it comes.
Lovely. Okay.
Just so you guys know all of us. Many meetings are recorded, they are not live broadcast, and we have the chance to fix this.
I don't know if you can hear me.
Turn your audio. Go ahead and say, "Switch to phone audio and just don't connect." That should might do it, because it thinks you're connected to your phone now.
How's that?
Better? Yeah? Okay.
You passed test one.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no.
No, maybe not, yeah.
I don't know who.
Can you turn off your microphone?
Yeah. You might have too many microphones out in the room.
Okay.
Can you turn your volume down?
Okay, how about that? I think that worked. Okay. Thank you.
Good?
Sounds much better for me.
All right, should we take two at Andrew? Should I bang the gavel again, or are we good? Okay, all right. We'll call the meeting of the Norfolk Building Subcommittee for October 26, 2022, to order. I will begin, since we are a subcommittee of the school committee, by reading our mission statement. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students through school, family, and community partnerships. We provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call, please. Neither one's fine.
Matt Hafner here.
Barry Nectow.
Victoria Saldana.
Sarah Ward.
Madora Champagne.
Ingrid Alardi. So tonight, thank you very much for joining us, and we are here to speak first to TKSP, who submitted a proposal for the Architecture and Feasibility Study for the Freeman Kennedy Expansion Project. As we talked to you earlier about, you'll have about 15 minutes to start with the presentation. Then we have some questions the committee will ask, and then we'll have 10 minutes at the end if you have any questions for us. But why don't we start with introductions? I'm Ingrid Alardi, I'm the Superintendent of the Norfolk Schools.
I just ate a lifesaver, so pardon me, but I'm Madora Champagne, I'm the Chair of the School Committee in Norfolk.
Sarah Ward, School Committee Member.
Victoria Saldana, Director of Curriculum and Norfolk Public Schools.
Barry Nectow, School Business Consultant.
Matt Hafner, Director of Facilities, Town and School.
And if you want to introduce your team, that'd be great.
Sure, I guess, you know, maybe we'll have it as part of the presentation, so we'll include that.
All right, so we'll jump right in, and you can start with your presentation.
Okay, I guess I kick it off. So, ciao, everyone, from Rome. I had intended to try and have that background of the Colosseum or something, but I'm not nearly clever enough technology-wise to pull that off, so instead it's my Airbnb. My name is Randall Luther, I'm a partner at TSKP Studio. Again, I apologize that I can't be there tonight. This was a trip that had been planned a long time, and if I wanted to stay married, I absolutely had to go. However, between the staff we have from our Boston office and Hartford office that are there at the meeting, you are very well represented. We appreciate the opportunity to meet with you and talk about your project. You're kind of disappearing, there we go. The timing for, we're really kind of excited about the project, because the timing is perfect for us. We have several large projects kind of coming off the boards in the next four weeks or so, and so we'll have a lot of capacity very soon, and so this would be a wonderful fit for us, and we're hoping that you find us to be a good fit as well. Next. Next slide. Oh. Oh, there we go. So although our work is often described as sort of fresh and sometimes even modern, we really do take our cues from the existing context, particularly when we're dealing with additions and renovations to existing buildings. We also work really hard to provide daylight in all our spaces. We think it's such an important aspect of wonderful educational spaces, and we know from numerous studies that it improves test scores and performance. We also work really hard to provide warm and welcoming spaces. First impressions are so important, especially for younger children. And then we also remember that the primary occupants of our buildings are children, and that the spaces really need to be child-centered, and so we really try and keep those principles in mind in all of our schoolwork. Next. So a little bit about myself. I've been an architect now for about 35 years, predominantly in the educational sector. The first project I actually worked on in at TSKP Studio was a renovation and addition to a 3-5 public school. And I was working with our senior partner at the time, and it, you know, came out quite well, and at the end of the project, he called me into his office and said, "You know, you did a really great job, so from now on, you're going to do all the addition renovation projects, and I'm going to do all the new buildings." So for about the next 20 years, the bulk of my work was doing renovations and additions. And we know that's certainly on the table here, and that's a sandbox I'm very comfortable playing in. So with that, actually, I'm going to ask the rest of the team to introduce themselves, beginning with Ugon.
Hi, I'm Ugon Kim. I'm the Director of the Boston Office, and I'll be the principal contact if we're so fortunate to be selected for this project. I've been with the office since we established the Boston Office around 11 years ago, and throughout that time, working on educational and MSBA projects throughout. I'm really excited about this project. I have a 10-year-old daughter, but I still remember the pains of being on a waitlist for a pre-K facility, and I know how important it is for this town.
Hello, I'm Julia McFadden, and I'll be the Project Manager on the project. I'm an architect, I've been in the business 24 years, but I also wear another hat. I'm an educational planner for the letters behind my name, A-L-E-P, as in Accredited Learning Environment Planner, and that goes back to my early years in graduate school, where I got introduced to kind of 21st century learning modalities. And for the last 14 years, I've been working on educational projects, and I've done educational planning with a variety of school districts. So I'll be kind of spearheading two aspects, the architecture and the educational mission.
Nick?
Nicholas Fair, I'm a Principal of Consulting Engineering Services, and I oversee our office here in Norwood, Massachusetts. Been with the firm for 16 years now, working in the school sector, but, you know, a lot of the public sectors and used to dealing with the unique challenges of a public job in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And hi, I'm Jesse Saylor, I'm a Principal at TSKP Studio. I've joined the team because I have a lot of experience in elementary school feasibility studies in Massachusetts. And so let's move forward.
Sure.
Stay on track.
So why TSKP? You know, we think we're the right fit for this project, and hopefully at the end of this, you'll agree. We have a lot of relevant experience on this particular program type. We are very familiar with expansions on an occupied site, which is unique about this particular project. We do know the MSBA process, you know, we know that there's a good chance that this study will be used for consideration, and so it's important to stress that. We are working on a number of net-zero schools that are in construction or in development now, and then, most importantly, as we know during this strange time, we have the capacity, as Randall said, we're finishing up some large projects. We are 35 kind of architects and designers across the two locations, from 12 nations speaking 10 different languages, and we're very proud of that. I think having the diverse group of voices that come to the table always result in kind of interesting conversations internally and externally, and really serve to give a better product to the client. This is a kind of list of all the schools that have been completed since the very beginning of TSKP, 36 of them are elementary schools, 14 have dedicated pre-K components to them, four are net-zero buildings, and then four are occupied expansions, again, you know, I think very important about this particular project. It's also important to stress in the 10 years, 11 years we've been up here, we have worked in over 20 different MSBA-funded projects across the Commonwealth. That kind of commitment to diversity kind of translates to the larger team with members who are kind of, you know, women-owned, minority-owned. We just think it's very important that this idea of diversity is reflected across the entire team and understand the commitment that Norfolk has to that.
Feasibility studies, right. Let's talk about them, next slide, please. So our firm has completed a number of feasibility studies in the last five years. The top five studies were all in Massachusetts and are all studies that I worked on or are in progress right now, very often with members of our team here. Of the five, three of them had already been accepted to the MSBA court program, but two of them had not, the two in Amherst, and we worked with them anticipating acceptance, which eventually they were accepted and were able to use our work in that context, which may be similar to the situation in Norfolk. The format of every study is very consistent in the MSBA, but what you include in the study is always very specific, it's responding to all the needs of each project. Here's one where we had physical models to show design options that was necessary for that study. Next slide, please. Early decisions are always very important in a project, and feasibility studies are all about early decisions, getting the project on track in terms of budget and schedule. Decisions should be data-driven. Our job is to provide information to you so you can make good decisions. This slide shows eight options we provided for an elementary school, we were reporting on project overall cost, we were reporting on schedule, we were reporting on phasing implications. Next slide, please. I can't stress the, over-stress the importance of construction phasing and thinking about that in feasibility. We're looking at potentially an addition renovation here right off the bat, and working through the phasing and understanding how much time it takes and how to keep disruptions to a minimum for our students, and safety is very key, so we'll be thinking about that. This slide shows six phases that were required for one of the options in one of our studies. So yes, I mentioned anticipating MSBA submission and acceptance. The study can be formatted so that it will follow the MSBA guideline, if that's what you're interested in. We've done that before. In that case, I would already have your table of contents here, because the format is pretty clear. I highlighted the initial space summaries. We could still provide space summaries, but we'd be missing one piece of information, which you would take from the MSBA in Module 1, which is the design enrollment. We would work with the Nezdek design enrollments, which you put in the RFP, that would be fine, they're usually close, but there's a bit of a negotiation ahead of you. Next slide. We also thought a little bit about how the schedule would be different if you were accepted into the MSBA pipeline or not. On the left side of this slide, you could see if you're accepted, we think the project would be complete, and this is an estimate, in January of 2027. We think you'd probably save 22 months if the town would proceed without the MSBA. It could be a much more direct streamlined process. Next slide. And of course, time is money, and this is a complicated issue, but this slide shows that while the MSBA path is less cost to the town of Norfolk, it may not be as much of a benefit as you expect, because it takes more time, so the overall cost of the project is more, and so we're predicting a $4.3 million difference in cost. However, there are 22 more months, so there may be temporary measures, portable classrooms, et cetera, that would erode that, so that figures into the calculation as well. We could discuss this later.
So we know that there's been a lot of investigations and studies done in terms of project enrollments, space allocation at the two schools, but it's clear that you're overcrowded. And so we know that the prior study really proposed building a single new addition at Freeman Kennedy, and we just kind of walked through to understand the issues. You know, most of this feasibility will be maybe to verify and confirm, and then add a new perspective if it so needs. So looking at Olive Day, as many of you know, right, it's an older building, so the site itself is constricted because of its older nature, a lot of the systems are at end of life, you know, I think they're at capacity, you know, because the site's so constricted, any addition would displace the play or kind of park areas, which is a no-go in my mind. And then the compliance issues, of course, because it's an older building. And then, of course, the killer is that even if you expand it here, it wouldn't address the town-wide kind of population issue. So I know additionally, there were studied portables and a new facility, but obviously for a cost that was also a no-go. Looking at Freeman Kennedy made sense, right? The original building is a model school, so it was designed for expansion. By building this facility, it, you know, it takes care of many of the expansion issues at both schools, and what better is that than one thing to solve multiple problems? We did understand at the presentation that I saw the superintendent give at 2019 about the extra capacity that exists in some of the utilities, and we'll talk a little bit about that further. And of course, from an operational standpoint, it's a no-brainer, right? You know, you have staff there, they can serve to continue their work at the school. I visit a school, meeting Matt there, I always go at the best and worst time, which is pickup. We know that it's quite congested, and so that's something that is an issue going down that road. Every minute I stayed longer, it was getting worse. You know, this is kind of a foundation of the prior study. Of course, we would have to do an analysis of what that additional vehicular kind of congestion would do to the area. It makes sense, though, to have it peel off from the main circulation earlier on. We did note that the parking area extends past the property line, but fortunately, that's owned by the town, so that, you know, that kind of conversation, if haven't already begun, will continue to be. And so a lot of this will be to kind of use this as a foundation and develop it further. We did look a little bit at site utilities. There was a kind of conversation whether or not, how to deal with stormwater. We are using Nich, which is the engineer of the original building, so they were able to bring a wealth of information to a table, you know, whether or not we can expand the existing stormwater system, or we go deeper into the town's property and bring, build basins there. There's pros and cons and downs, that would be part of the study. You know, kind of roof drainage systems where you can see the building footprint is would have to be kind of looked at, the rain garden in the courtyard would have to be kind of reconsidered, but you know, maybe it would be an opportunity to think about how the courtyard could be served for pre-K. We did talk to them about the septic tank. There was, I know that there was kind of dialogue whether it had capacity of about 250 more students. Nich is looking at it a little bit more deeper, they think it's less, they don't know how much, but you know, again, confirm, verify, that would be all part of the study.
So you know, the big challenge we have with every job, particularly with expansion, is utilizing the existing design concepts the building has, its facility knows they can service, but then trying to bring into a newer type of system. A lot of talk about decarbonization, going to Governor Baker's goals. So trying to find that balance is really critical, particularly, you know, it's nice to see that Matt's here, because be able to get live input on how the building's operating today, to make sure the new systems, while we might be trying to make them better, also fall in line with what their use of servicing, and being able to service them and do the work without shutting down the rest of the building. So trying to find that right balance is really critical in this process.
So then, programming. What will programming look like for this study? Well, that's something we can't answer ourselves and would work with you right up front to really lay out an appropriate schedule of activities, whether that's some meetings with the superintendent and other educators, or whether there needs to be a greater engagement across more stakeholders to involve them in really understanding what the educational foundational mission is for the district, and how it's linked to this particular project and to the spaces that you are trying to deliver to make sure it matches the program. So we will work with you in hopefully ways that can tease these things out. We like to have hands-on activities, if that's possible. Next slide. Again, you, we can bring in kind of a range of stakeholders to understand all of the programmatic needs, because it's not just a list of square foot spaces, we need to understand the technology for every space, the furnishings, kind of the facilities' needs. So bringing in facilities in some of our meetings and sessions, so that all of our staff on the engineering side knows what needs to go into each and every space. So that's a really kind of foundational aspect, and whether or not that happens at this feasibility study phase, whether we want to kind of forefront that, we know that you're going to have to deliver, if you go down the road with MSBA, you're going to have to deliver an educational specification that outlines all of that. So just kind of figuring out when that's going to fall best in the timeline of activities. Next. So I did want to say, though, that what would be useful is for our team to get really comfortable with what your programmatic needs are. We've looked a bit at kind of what we could find out on your website, but we understand educational spaces. We understand how to design kind of for 21st century learning, classrooms that can meet the needs for all the different types of grade levels. In the little diagram here on the right in 3D, we've got the cubby nook at the entrance, you've got a classroom that's set up with various learning centers, a pull-out space for kind of specialized instruction, one-on-one or small group. So those are kinds of things we want to really understand well with your educators and for all the different age levels. Next slide. And we know how to execute functional and dynamic STEM and STEAM spaces, which we understand is a great part of your program. Today's students are learning better through hands-on projects, making things, and making things requires the space, the materials, the water, the electricity, and the technology to support kind of all of those fun activities. So we know how to do that, and as you see here, even into a sanit, sorry, a greenhouse. Next slide, please. And we understand your youngest learners, who will be down on the floor a lot of the time, so that might mean providing carpet, or rugs, or radiant and floor heating. And so we are, again, kind of working with you to really understand the needs of how to deliver all of your programs. Randall going to bring this one?
Sure. Randall, we're at the last slide, so if you want to finish up the presentation?
Sure, so I'll just wrap it up. So on the left, we had done a renovation in addition to a small elementary school, and they invited me in to do a career fair. So I came in with models of things that we do, like we showed at the beginning of this presentation, to explain what architects do. And then about a week later, I got a whole bunch of cards, and this one in particular I got, and I believe that's a portrait of me, as you can tell the lightness. And I'll just read it, it said, "I thought it was cool that you made a model of a high school. I think it was also cool that you get paid for making models." It's here, Luke Caden. And indeed, it is very cool that as architects, we get to work with children and we get paid for making models. And then the shot on the right, of all, you know, we're architects, so, you know, we've built a lot of buildings over the years, and we have them all professionally photographed, and we have literally, you know, thousands of photographs. And of all the shots we've taken, of all the projects we've done, this one was snapped at a ribbon-cutting by our marketing director, and it's by far my favorite shot. And it's that young woman, that young girl, right in the center, and that smile, I mean, that's the reason why you're here tonight, that's the reason why we're here tonight, right? We have the best jobs in the world, we get to do and create spaces for these kids, and every once in a while, I get lucky enough to see a face like that. So with that, we'll open it up for questions.
Great, thank you. We have about six questions for you that we've prepared, and there may have some follow-ups in response to your presentation. We have about 30 minutes for that, so about five minutes per question, just in your response planning, and I think Vicki is going to start us off.
Thank you, hi, thank you for that wonderful presentation. So can you expand a little bit and tell us more about your recent feasibility study that you've completed, and if you could just kind of talk about some of the successes and/or challenges that you faced, and how did you?
Is there a particular feasibility study, or just one of them?
One of the most recent.
Recent ones, yeah, that you had.
Couple years.
Okay, yeah.
The most appropriate one.
Maybe most appropriate, yeah. Okay, yeah, well, I think we could talk about the Amherst study. That was probably, so yeah, that was a study for a town that hadn't been accepted MSBA, as I mentioned, and it was a challenge, because the town was in factions at that point. They had pursued a consolidation project of putting the two schools together, and then finally, it had been voted down by parents and families who felt that they should have neighborhood schools. And so in the wake of that, there was just a lot of dissension, and the faction that had voted it down was the one who was asking us to do the study, essentially. We were selected competitively. So working with them, it was interesting, because we were required to stick to, and I actually have the study here, if you want to take a look, it's quite a home.
So that's it, that's all?
That's one of the two, then they hired us back to do the second one. We had to stick to a neighborhood school program, but I think as the information we brought forward was shared, they began to realize that they needed to find a way to consolidate the two schools to address both schools in one project within the MSBA process. So they ended up working out a compromise through the process. So in that way, I think it was very successful. It didn't work out for us, it's a challenge, because we were forever associated with the faction. So I think politically, we were kind of done. But we did do two studies for them, and I think they were very comprehensive, and I think, you know, they did get accepted to the MSBA in a consolidation school project, so they're moving forward.
And just a follow-up, could you kind of maybe, I don't know if it's for this one or any other one, like, how did you siege the work to limit disruptions to school programs if the site was occupied?
Occupied site, Randall, do you want to take that? In terms of?
I didn't hear, if you could just repeat the question?
Yes. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
The question was, "How do we protect students in an occupied site?" I had spoken about phasing, and I'm looking to you, because, why not?
Yeah, so I mean, there are, the phasing is a really important part of that, I mean, and Jesse alluded to it. I mean, there are certain activities that really you want to do in a summer when the building is unoccupied, either for safety reasons or for disruption reasons. For example, you know, you don't want to be swinging steel over the building when it's occupied. I mean, you know, those kinds of things really have to be done in unoccupied periods, you know, they got to be done in summers. And then the other piece is separation of students and contractors is really important, and it's really clear, ideally, that you can get the site set up, the logistics set up, in the summer before parents show up, so, because in the beginning of every year, there's a certain learning that goes on, right? You know, new parents, they're learning where to come, where to go. So it's really important, and makes life so much easier, that can be set up for September, that the contractor can be on board, the site can be set up so that whatever temporary provisions, temporary parking spaces, temporary routing is there in the beginning, so everyone understands where you're supposed to go, and you can kind of teach everybody. And then, of course, you know, depending whether you're working with a general contractor or a construction manager, at the end of the day, a lot of the heavy lifting does fall on their shoulders. If it's a construction manager, you know, they'll be a part of the team early on, and we'll have more of a dialogue with them about how we can best manage the safety on the site in terms of access and separation of, again, staff and. site in terms of access and separation of, again, staff and students from contractors.
Can I just clarify one question? So, I know when you do the feasibility study, you will propose potential phasing if we were going to move forward. How would you address phasing during the feasibility, given that we're going to be starting like November, December, and we need a plan by, you know, May or June? So, our kids are already in session and I know some of the study and some of the work you're going to need to do will have to be when we have kids in the building. So, how do you address that for the feasibility? How do you phase for the feasibility portion?
I think we can save you guys time. We're just kind of shrink down the scope a little bit of the question.
Oh, well, that part's easy.
We thought it might be easier question, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, we're perfectly comfortable working, you know, coming in on weekends if staff, you know, if social staff is available, though we can get in there on a Saturday after hours. We really will work around your schedule. I mean, to be honest, it's sometimes very helpful for us to be there and observe the daily activities. In fact, Jesse and I on a renovation project we did a few years ago, we each spent a day as a student. So, I was a second grader in Mrs. McGann's class and I spent the whole day in her class. I went to art with them. I went to lunch with them. And it was very informative. I learned a lot about how that school operated and what were the problems that would have not been apparent from just talking to administrator and a teacher or two. So, you know, that kind of exercise is helpful, but in terms of looking above ceilings and, you know, making measurement and so on, all that can be done after hours or weekends, whatever works for you.
Great. Thank you.
Great. I'll take the next question and it has to do with the project team. So, if you think about the 2019 feasibility study you did, how stable was the project team for this study? And how would you approach stabilizing your project team for our study?
Yeah, so for that study, the project team did not change and the same team went on to do the second study for Amherst as well. And it was actually Randall and I on that team, as well as Richard and other... anyways. So, I wouldn't think anyone on this team would change through the course of this study.
Which goes to our, we were saying earlier, our capacity right now in being assigned and dedicated to the timeframe of this study.
Yes.
And if I do a follow-up on it?
Yes.
So, is that fairly typical for your projects, that your project team stays fairly stable throughout?
Yes, I think perhaps compared to other firms, we tend to have team members follow the project through. It's not uncommon for me to follow from the feasibility study right through construction.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we'd add staff and each of our individual levels of involvement, you know, change during different phases. Some of us are more active than others, but all of us are active for the duration. It's just, you know, depending on our strengths and what phase of the project you're in, some of us may be more engaged than the others.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm next. Sorry, I was distracted. Audio visuals there. Okay, so, could you, I know you touched on this a little bit in your presentation, so I have a basic idea of numbers, but what experience do you have working with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, specifically on school feasibility, but we can discuss other construction projects as well if you'd like to. But we're very focused on feasibility tonight, so.
I understand. Well, I do think we kind of hit on this. We showed you the four that we've completed and we're working on a fifth one now with North Adams, and that's another elementary school. That's a consolidation, essentially. So, was there a second part of the question?
So, just so I'm clear, so would that be a total of five? So, four you've done and then one that's ongoing right now?
Four and one ongoing. Yep.
I would add, Jesse can't say this, but I can. The MSBA loves Jesse. Whenever we do interviews for core projects, the staff always report that they're very pleased with Jesse Saylor and they, you know, he... That's why he's on all our study projects and he's usually a lead on MSBA projects because he has a great rapport with them and they really appreciate his level, his attention to detail and the work he does.
And just to follow the question based on your presentation, you said Amherst was a community that was, that did the feasibility prior to entrance into MSBA. Did you support them in transitioning and addressing any gaps that they might need?
Yes, we did provide our materials to them. So, yes, we provided some support. One of the things that changed for them, though, we were studying neighborhood schools. So, the design options, some of the scope of the study had to be redone. They weren't able to use it because through the process, they realized they wanted to do something else. But, you know, there's a lot of site investigation. There's a lot of information that's generated in these studies, which is useful to take forward. So, they benefited.
All right, I'm going to ask you two questions. Can you describe your approach to project management? Question one. And how do you communicate with your subcontractors and ensure that their contributions to the final report are comprehensive, address the concerns of the district, and are delivered on time?
Do you want to take the project management?
Sure. Big question. Since I'm the project manager. So, say, what aspect of project management?
Can you describe your approach to project management?
Lots of communication and always following that up. I guess I'm old school. I like to call people still. And that's really important with our subconsultants, as well as with the owner and kind of making sure that we kind of keep schedules moving along. There's a lot of coordination that needs to happen and you just can't let things wait or if, you know, an email has been sent out and you don't get a response, you can't wait. So, you know, I like to be very proactive in kind of reaching out, kind of making sure the connections get made between scheduling activities, from the activities where our consultants need to go out to make those visits to the site. Another aspect then is potentially whoever's kind of the key person, or I imagine we'll have some meetings on some sort of regular set schedule, is having a report that really outlines the activities that we've just completed and what's coming up so that we're kind of all aware of how the project is progressing and flagging any issues or concerns that we might need to negotiate as we move forward.
I might add, Julia may not realize she does this, but she schedules a lot of, from my perspective, which are good, a lot of regularly scheduled team meetings. And typically, the owner is invited to these team meetings. And although there are sort of workshops for us and our consultants, the owner is always welcome to sit in on those or participate in those so that they kind of always know where we're going and what we're doing. And I think she's, she probably doesn't realize how good she is at that, but from my perspective, she's really good about bringing the owner in to the inner workings of what we do. And I think it provides a lot of benefits because everyone is on the same page all the time.
If I could add, as one of the subcontractors who, you know, follows up with their lead, you know, those teams have worked together a lot. You know, these firms have had a lot of experience together, a lot of experience individually. And so, we, you know, we know what we're all used to doing together, so we can kind of look out for each other and give multiple levels of support when needed, which I think is critical, the longevity of all of us together.
Awesome. Second half. Second half, so you kind of hit it already, but how do you communicate with your subcontractors and ensure that their contributions to the final report are comprehensive, address the concerns of the district, and are delivered on time? Kind of touched it.
Well, yeah, I would add then that, you know, we probably will send a, schedule a draft review, right? Getting drafts from everybody. And that's well ahead of the final deadline so that we can kind of flag if, you know, any one of the subconsultants is having an issue, kind of pulling together their report and what those reasons might be so that we can kind of make sure that we can hit that deadline. So, I don't know. Any other?
I think that's it. We just review it very closely.
Thank you.
The other thing I do is I send out Outlook calendar invites when things are due and have reminders, so.
Yep.
Sarah, I think you're next.
It's tough being the first question on the second page. Can you describe for us the strategies and methods you employ to engage the community during the project and how you provide information and updates to them?
To the public.
To the public, sorry.
Yeah, well, certainly, we'd like to talk to you about what channels you've used and how you've been getting the word out to your community so that we can decide if that's, you know, to follow along in that same vein. We can certainly schedule some various types of, I guess, forums or community meetings. Maybe that's with the educators, that's some sort of district level meeting. Do we go to a PTA to kind of engage the parents? Is there a broader community meeting that can be scheduled at appropriate points in the feasibility study? So, those are all ways that we can communicate kind of what's happening with the study. We find that the broader community, it's good to have some session early on before we've really gotten going so that we can say, "Here's the study. This is what we're planning to do." And we could even say, "We are going to be having sessions with your educators here and your parents here," and this is other ways for you to, you know, voice your concerns and tell them who that, who those channels are. And usually, that's someone on your end, but someone that we're in contact with, that the broader community can give their concerns. And then saying, "We're going to have another session, you know, at the end where we'll report back on what we are, have discovered through the process." So, I think that broader community engagement at the beginning and the end, and then kind of the smaller groups kind of throughout the process.
Is there anything that you guys feel is unique about how you achieve that from other firms?
I always like to, so not just in, we don't like to just kind of stand up and present and try to find a way in which we are engaging and listening and getting, and soliciting feedback. And I think that's why you want to have it early on so that you can truthfully say, you know, "We are listening to you" before we get going. And I think that's the key, is that it's not that we're in this together and communicating that well and then feeding back what we've heard so that they know that we've heard them.
All right, I have the last question for tonight and then we have time if you have questions for us. Is there anything that we haven't asked you tonight or that hasn't come up in your presentation that you feel makes your firm stand out and that you think would help us evaluate your firm and your credentials for the feasibility study?
What do y'all think?
Design, right?
Yeah, I think so. Yogan, do you want to speak to that?
I mean, I think, we didn't say it to begin, but, you know, I did the walkthrough. It's a kind of, you know, if the Kennedy School is the selected location, you know, it's a beautiful school. We do think, however, our kind of portfolio of work is highly compatible with the kind of existing space. So, it would be a really kind of seamless kind of transition between one and the other. I do think we really pride ourselves on both designing buildings from the outside in, but simultaneously from the inside out, like harnessing different aspects of color, graphics, just really creating dynamic, you know, powerful spaces for, you know, children to enjoy. And I think really, we kind of balance our kind of knowledge of, you know, the technical part, but, you know, these kind of creating these beautiful spaces. Hopefully, when you see our work, that kind of percolates as well to the top.
Yeah, the only other thing I would add is I think it's fairly unique, the amount of senior involvement that you get in our office, partner involvement. Frequently, when I go and interview, which I wish, if I was there today, I might bring it, I'll do 50 hand sketches of details for a project. I mean, I'll go through the whole thing, Jesse and I, and we'll sketch out all the important details for a project. I mean, and I kind of think that's pretty much never done in the public school environment where partners will take that kind of time on a project. You know, we're not a huge firm and that's because if we got much bigger, I wouldn't be able to do that. Jesse wouldn't be able to do that. You know, we would be too busy doing management stuff, which I hate. I got in this business not to manage, I got in it to, you know, to design buildings. And so, I think that's pretty unique for us, that the partners are so heavily engaged in the details of a project. And, you know, when you walk into a building and all the details just seem right, you know, you can tell. And then it doesn't cost more, it just takes thought and experience. And I think that's something, if you were able to tour our buildings, it would immediately be apparent that there's a real attention to detail.
All right, then we will open it up. We have 10 minutes left, so if you have any questions for us about process or the project or anything, we'd be happy to answer them.
Well, I do have one question. Maybe you could go to the resource slides. There's the one about enrollment. I noticed that the RFP mentioned 156 students in the next 10 years would be added to the, would be additional students.
Yes.
But, well, the addition, obviously, the one from 2019 obviously accommodated more. And looking back at the meeting I happened to watch from 2019, you had mentioned that you already had 100 additional students. So, I guess my question is, how many additional students did you get between 2019 and now? What's the overall?
Close to 100, about 85 students. We just recommissioned Nezdeq to redo our enrollment study and the new projections are slightly lower, which is why on the RFP, there's a slightly lower number. But, the overall add is going to be close to that. So, we had 85 between the last, over the last couple of years and then we're projecting another 156.
Okay. Okay, so it's 225 or so.
Yeah, we were thinking 250, 275 originally, so.
Okay. Okay. Simple answer. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Have you done educational visioning and do you have a thought about what you might need and want to?
We did when we did the, we, several years ago, we had contracted with Flansburgh, who designed the original building. And we did some educational visioning and work with bringing in all of the people that would potentially occupy the new space, which is where we determined that probably the best solution for our district at that time, and I know you'll look at it, was with one building expansion project to bring the preschool over, for all the reasons that you outlined and that we talked about with H. Olive Day being an aging school. Right now, we're out of capacity in H. Olive Day, so we don't have a music classroom. We don't have a computer media center that's now on the stage, which I know if you've worked with schools in this situation, is really challenging. But, we also, we have six preschool classrooms there. So, if we were to move them to a more educationally appropriate early childhood center, we'd solve that capacity. And then we would be able to, with the upstairs, potentially meet the needs of Freeman. But, we would like to obviously look at options. But, yes, we've talked about how we would incorporate that, what that would look like. And we did some, they had done interviews with all the educators and with some stakeholders and community around that space. I think you probably saw in the design, we also thought about addressing STEM needs because we had an opportunity to make a makerspace science lab in that area and potentially maybe move our computer media center to make that more of a learning project area for students. So, we did really look at how that would best serve the current programs at the Freeman as well.
So, you wouldn't need an extensive, another extensive programming effort, but maybe just a smaller effort to kind of, for our team to make sure we really understood what your educational vision is and maybe detail kind of some of the programmatic needs of each space.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm interested, you know, because the study was in 2019 and we went through a whirlwind of change.
Yes.
You know, are there some, I don't know how best to frame it, but, you know, like, it'd be interesting to know if some, through that process, through this kind of change we've all gone through, have some of the priorities of the district changed, are different perspectives now in terms of what is needed at the, in the buildings?
I do think there's, that's where we'd have to do some further study and conversations. Obviously, safety and security is primary, given things that have happened. We have done a lot of work and improved the facilities at both of our buildings to be secure, but you're going to have a second entrance for parents coming in, a second roadway. We've... We talked about needing to keep that separate from the main building. So, safety and security, I think, is something we have to reevaluate. And I think, you know, coming off of years where we had to do hybrid and remote instruction, technology needs, and have dramatically increased, and we have had to add all kinds of supports to strengthen our Wi-Fi connection and all of those kinds of things to promote that. And I think there's a lot more technology used to enhance instruction in the buildings now. So, those are some things that we'd have to look at.
One thing that I'm interested in, as well, is room layouts to accommodate social distancing, how to maximize square footage in order to accommodate as many in a... Space, because we got very good at placing markers on the floor, and some rooms worked out better than others. So, I'd love to have that somewhat looked into as well, in case we have to deal with this again.
And we were, as a district, unable to offer full-day kindergarten when there was a return to school because of the spacing issues. We did not...
So, you had to do half-days?
Yeah, and so, we had universal, full, free kindergarten for, I think, probably five or six years prior to that. So, I mean, there is a contingent of, you know, families and parents in town that are well aware of the spacing issues, which was a bad thing at the time, but it may be a good thing going forward that they remember. I don't...
So, all of... I think all of those things are things that we have to reconsider in looking at a new space at this point.
Yeah.
And mechanical was as far as the HVAC, the ventilation, just we know this could, you know, now that we're fully aware of things that can happen, want to be prepared for the future, so we're not scurrying, trying to necessarily come up with solutions on the spot.
I don't know if you saw in our documentations, but one other thing, just in keeping with this line of questioning, Freeman Kennedy is a designated storm and crisis center for the town. So, there are potential times that we would be providing housing, shelter, short-term services for the community. So, that's something to think about, too.
It's the only one in the town, right?
No. We have the senior centers, we have designated for the smaller events, and the Freeman is designated for larger events.
Is it on generator now?
It is on generator. It's a natural gas. Things that we don't have now that we need really is showers, because we have an availability of a space, but we don't really have a good layout for it. But, yes, all our major stuff on that building is covered by generator power.
So, it's an opportunity in a renovation to rethink how we would accommodate a town-wide kind of community crisis with this new space, too.
Do you have one more question? I mentioned the MSBA. Where are you on that? Is that a difficult question?
So, no, it's not. We've applied three times for consideration in the building expansion program.
I didn't realize there was that many.
We were declined the first year because they changed the... They had an overabundance of applications, and so they couldn't meet that. So, they encouraged us to apply again the second time. We applied the second time. Obviously, that was during the pandemic, and so they were very delayed in awarding their bids. I think it was almost nine or 10 months. So, we were notified that we were declined again, encouraged to reapply. I reapplied last April. We... They haven't... Now, I think it's now on to January where they're going to be considering.
Yeah.
So, given that the students are coming, the town voted to do the feasibility study, because if we're not invited again, I don't see us applying, because, as you said, we can't do two more years and meet the needs. It'll be very costly for the town with portable classrooms and the site work needed to accommodate. So, we have... Hoping at the end of this, we'll have a good cost estimate of what the project would cost. We should hear whether or not we're invited after this third round of applications. And if we're not, I think then our goal would be to try to get the community on board with moving forward independently. And we're hoping this feasibility will really give us the information needed to... For the community to make a good decision.
Makes a lot of sense to me, actually. Randall, do you have any last questions?
What's your... What's the timeline for your decision-making process?
So, we are interviewing another firm tonight and one tomorrow. And then, the building subcommittee will review all of the applications, references, and we will formalize a recommendation that we'll bring to our full school committee November 9th, and we hope to be able to award the bid immediately following that.
Wonderful.
Aggressive.
We've been waiting. We're ready to go.
Yes, it's been a long process, so.
Great. Well, thank you guys so much for coming in. We appreciate it, and we will be in touch. Anybody else have any last thoughts, or?
No, I'm impressed we finished with five minutes.
We stayed on time, so, great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, enjoy Rome.
Yes, enjoy Rome.
Thank you. And whoever you select, good luck on your project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Awesome.
We don't...